Everybody, we're gonna go ahead and get started. First of all, we're gonna start off, we just got out of closed session, so I'm gonna ask the city attorney to go through anything to report. City Attorney?
Sure, the city council has reached an being from closed session with no reportable action taken.
Great, thank you. Since we're back in session, I'll go ahead and have the city clerk do a roll call again, or a roll call in attendance.
If we could first have the Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Class of 22, join the council.
Yeah, come on up, guys. Okay, so, we've got the Sunburst Academy here with us, and what we're gonna do is, they're gonna actually lead us through the flag salute and the invocation. And, did you want, should we do that first?
We can do roll call, and then we'll do the pledge and invocation.
Okay, go ahead.
Roll call, we have City Council, Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Sherco.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Class of 22, President Zavala.
Here.
Executive Assistant Swazza.
Here.
Cadet, I'm sorry, Ikagari.
Here.
Cadet Sadera.
Oh, here ma'am.
Cadet Hernandez.
Here ma'am.
Cadet Flores.
Here ma'am.
Cadet Melanderez.
Here ma'am.
Cadet Rodriguez.
Here ma'am.
Cadet Chup.
Here ma'am.
And Cadet Zavilla.
Here ma'am.
Alrighty, so if you guys can please stand up and join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you all please bow your heads and worship our prayer. Dear God, thank you for this day, and I hope and pray this meeting goes out well, and each individual will go home safely and sound. And for all those people out there that don't have a family, Thanksgiving is right around the corner, and I just wanna say thank you for each and every individual that's here now, and just guide them through safety and make sure they are all healthy and well. Amen.
Alright, first of all, let's give them a hand. I'm gonna ask the city council to join us, stand there, and also Sergeant First Class Edwards, he's gonna give a little bit of an overview, so you guys can join him soon. Everybody can be seated, thank you. We have Councilmember Sherco that's having a hard time getting down here after the UCLA game, but come on down. So Sergeant First Class Edwards, can I have you join me up here?
Good evening, my name is Sergeant First Class Edwards, I'm the Commandant at Sunburst Youth Academy, and this, we have our student council behind us, Class 22. We've been there for about 11 years, it's a five-and-a-half-month residential program, so they live here on the base, and they go to school, it's a credit recovery program. So it's a school for at-risk youth, excellent kids, so they live with us for five-and-a-half months, and then we track them for up to a year after the program. We're checking in each month to see whether or not they're placed, whether they're in school, join the military, whether they're working, whether they have jobs. So I would just like to thank you for this opportunity, for having us today. Thank you.
So, we graduate a bunch of classes over at the base for Sunburst Youth Academy, and you know, I would say that these are true heroes, these kids here, they definitely are fighting to make their lives better. You know, we've had the opportunity over the years, I see Dean Gross here, at the very beginning when we were on the council in 2006-7, that we started working through this at Sunburst Youth Center, or Youth Academy. We were able to get this going, and it was just in a kind of condemned building. With the help of Congresswoman Napolitano, with Congressman Loenthal, a lot of the folks that are around here that really fought for the federal money to kind of get this going, they have a graduation coming up, I believe it's December 7th. And we, you know, we all, all the council members go, not only here, and all the police in the local areas, so we just wanted to say to you guys that we are completely, as a community, behind you guys, we're glad to have hosting you guys here in our city, we wish you the best, and we really appreciate you coming out here tonight, thank you very much. Next up, what I'd like to do is to call Joe from the Brew House Ale Kitchen up here, real quick, 'cause we have a small business event that we wanted to talk about. So, coming up here right after Thanksgiving is a small business celebration that we do, we really try to promote shopping in our local area. Has there anybody in the, in here been to the Brew House there on the Boulevard, can you just raise your hand? You know, for me, being on the council for 12 years, Joe, I mean, I don't know what to say, you know, I always had this dream of being on the council, that we would be able to have dinner, some, you'd be able to sit there, it'd actually be worth sitting on the Boulevard to watch, and to just be able to kick back, and you know, you really came in and did this, and we really appreciate what you're doing there. Yeah, I think everybody in the community, and plus, the, all of the different choices of food, you know, my family, when we go there, when we really wanna eat good, we go and eat a lot, and eat good, so we just, as a part of the city, we just wanted to thank you. I wanted to give you this certificate, maybe if I could have you talk a little bit about So, this is a proclamation from the City of Los Alamos, it's basically for Small Business Saturday, November 24th, and again, behalf of the city council, we just want to thank you, and if you can just talk to the community a little bit about this, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you for coming out. This means a lot to me, it means mostly, most to, you know, my family, because of all the blood, sweat, and tears that goes into trying to pull off a project like this. The support from the community has been immense, from day one, we're a small, tight-knit community, I feel blessed now to be a part of this community. We've got a lot of good things, you know, ahead of us, a lot of good things in the works, you know. Other than that, thank you very much for this opportunity to be up here and speak to the group, and you know, I tell everyone, we'll keep cooking it if you keep eating it, so, you know, we'll be here, you know, into the future, so thank you very much.
anybody in the audience could come forward, speak on any item on the council agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to no more than five minutes per speaker, do I have any folks that would like to address the council?
Speaking, my name's Shelley Henderson, I'm speaking as the current Chair of the Los Alamos Chamber of Commerce, I would like to commend the city in its vast and generous cooperation with the business community, not only on Small Business Saturday, celebrating the local business community, but all year long. We can be a community, meaning the city of Los Alamos can cooperate with the business community, which can in turn seek the support of the residents of the city. It works very well, and I would just like to see it continue. Thank you so much for supporting the business community.
Thank you. Alrighty, anybody else? Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, my name's Brad Fieldhouse, I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit here in Orange County called CityNet, and I'm actually here to talk about an event that's happening next January, so it's an advanced heads-up, and it's the 2019 Homeless Point-in-Time Count. Homelessness is obviously a critical issue, challenging cities all up and down California, and CityNet, we're a homeless solutions organization that works for a number of cities around Orange County. We've been contracted by the County of Orange to facilitate the 2019 Point-in-Time Count Survey, and we're gonna do a couple of things different. We are gonna be going to every city this year, and actually counting in your cities, there will be teams of volunteers in every city in Orange County, and we're gonna be doing a census-style version, where we're gonna try and interview as many people as possible. CityNet's been working countywide for quite a few years now, since 2014, we've seen over 3,000 people exit the streets, and move on to much better trajectories for their life, in partnership with them as well. As a homeless agency, we're committed to collecting robust data, data's important, data's important to sort of help us make collective and city-by-city individual decisions on how exactly do we align resources, how do we generate enough housing and things that are necessary, and so that's sort of where this count is gonna be seeking to sort of address that citywide, as well as countywide. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, provides around $23 million annually to the Orange County for housing and homeless services, and HUD mandates that we do this count every other year of our unsheltered population countywide, and we're gonna be doing this count next January, on the 23rd, which is a Wednesday, 24th and 25th, but on that first day, we're sort of hoping to make a big push, to sort of get as many teams as possible, we're gonna need lots of volunteers, and if you sign up early at EveryoneCountsOC.org, Everyone Counts OC.org, and I have a little flyer that I can leave by, that reminds you of that information, you can actually select which city, that we'll do our best to sort of make sure that you count locally, and we'd love to have you come and join us, and help us go interview and talk to some of the most vulnerable residents in our community, and that data will then sort of inform you, we'll come back, we look forward to coming back, and sort of sharing what we learned countywide, as well as specifically in your city here in Los Alamos. So, Everyone Counts OC, you can sign up online today, the website is live, and you can sign up, and then we look forward to a productive activity of, you know, talking to some vulnerable folks in early January. Can I leave some of these here? Thank you for the time.
May I have a question?
Yeah, hey, hold on just a second, we have a question.
So I have a question, so on the age of the volunteer, are you looking for a certain age group, or is it open?
So there's gonna be five, potentially six deployment centers countywide, that'll be available, and so on that first day, they're gonna be volunteering, we're starting at 5:00 in the morning, meaning you'll be showing up at 4:00 in the morning, and then we're going out again that same evening, so we're actually doing the count in the mornings and in the evenings over a number of days, to make sure we can count. So to answer your question, in order to go out, we need team captains, as well as surveyors, that will be using ArcGIS and do their interviews on the phone, you must be 18-years-old by age to go out in the field. However, at the deployment centers, if you're of high school age, or all the way up to, maybe you don't wanna go out and go into the highways and byways, but you're interested in volunteering, you can volunteer at the deployment centers as well. I think the nearest ones are in Anaheim and Huntington Beach, and they'll be sort of covering those surrounding areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Rob, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, hey, nice mustache, man.
Thank you, man.
Yeah.
Sorry, you know it's a member.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm noticing.
I don't normally say it in public like this, I'm four-years cancer-free.
Oh, God bless you.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Phew, okay, two weeks, it's all.
Yeah.
As Troy said, first off, my name is Rob Feldman, I live at 11162 Bennington Street in Los Alamos, California, the beautiful city of Los Alamos, I bleed Los Al colors, we've been here 30 years. So first off, I do wanna congratulate the council people that are back on, I do wanna say a quick thing about Troy, and Troy and I have been friends for all the years he's been on, we barely agree on anything, but what's been so really cool about this, is that we've had discourse, we've been able to talk, we've been able to look at each other, and whether we agree or don't, we do come to some conclusions, which is really something that's very, very important in a small, little municipality like ours.
Yeah, thanks.
Being the second smallest, behind Villa Park, and I do have knowledge about that too, so I don't stand up here just talking. And then congratulations to Dean, if he's still here, he'll be up there, and I'll miss seeing your face up there, I really will.
Thanks, Rob, thank you.
Yeah. So what I'm here about, living in New Dutch Haven Track, and knowing many, many people in Carrier Row, the famous signal at Enterprise is rearing its ugly head again. We have, you know, I'm kind of all over the place, 'cause I know it's just starting, but right here, I have a 26-page, count them, 26-page agreement, mutual settlement and release agreement that was done. We had a committee of ragtag people like myself and other people, I'm sorry to say that Brad Sheridan is no longer with us, and neither is JM, he was part of it, all my other committees, one's in the middle of a divorce, one's moved out, so on and so forth, so I'm here right now, trying to, I have other people ready to come rock and roll with me up here. But, what we truly believe, the city of Cypress, again, and I said this a couple of weeks ago, is biling the city of Los Alamos. The new, the ovation, the new seniors, great, glad the new homes, all that good stuff, but I have heard, not heard, I've been told, excuse me, this is absolutely, if you want, I'm not gonna tell you names of people, but not one, not two, not 10, but well over 15 people have said that the people in ovation, that don't worry, there will be a signal at Enterprise, Los Alamos will bend over, and they always do. They are promising that, that is not right. Number one, you have concerned citizens here, not just me, I'm not just standing here myself, you do know I know how to talk, so that's why I'm up here. But, with this said, I can read, and what I really wanna do is take a quick second, and talk about how the at-will signal at Cottonwood Way was agreed to. We took over, by the way, people, we took over three-and-a-half years to negotiate this. We can go back to all the history, you don't really wanna hear it tonight, and I don't think the kids wanna hear it either. We certainly could, if you want, I could sit down and tell you all about it, and why Costco was supposed to be where Cottonwood was, and Cottonwood was supposed to be where Costco is, you know, and Johnny over there will tell us, she remembers it well, Alice Allap people, so we have knowledge, and I can gladly tell you about the history, and how at times Arrowhead and Cottonwood were supposed to agree on certain things, on Lexington, Arrowhead was ready to go, Cottonwood said, "No way." So that's why we only have one lane each way. But, what I wanna read quickly, because the big, big thing is the signal at Enterprise. People already are nuts, shortcutting through New Dutch Haven, Carrier Row in the morning to the base, because there is truly, the traffic is so intense. When I say intense, I sometimes go up now to walk her up to Cerritos and go the back way, 'cause I can't, I can't go any other way, that's not right, I've lived here for 30 years, you know. So, with that said, modification of Cottonwood's plans regarding Enterprise Drive, Cypress and Cottonwood will abandon the previous contemplated eastbound left-turn lane from eastbound Cotella onto northbound Enterprise, a contemplated southbound left-turn lane from southbound Enterprise onto eastbound Cotella. In other words, I could go in and on, but it's all part of the traffic improvement plan, Cypress agreed to it, they signed off, oh, I got, I'm flashing, Cypress agreed to it, Los Al agreed to it, Cottonwood agreed to it, Arrowhead agreed to it. I'm gonna continue to hold this up, because this is an agreement, and I wanna see it stand, I wanna see you guys protect us to the best of your ability. And since I'm really flashing, I'm done, I'll be back with more, but we do not want a signal at Enterprise.
Cool, thank you, Rob.
Thank you all, again, good luck to you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Perfect timing. Anybody else have anything? Good evening.
Mayor, City Council, staff, I'm Gail Taylor, I'm here from Cypress College and the Cypress College Foundation to briefly discuss or mention the 44th Annual Americana Awards, and I want you to know that we currently have 269 students from Los Alamos enrolled at the college, and our big fundraiser to raise money to support our students through scholarships is on February 23rd, you've been very supportive for many, many years of that event, February 23 Disneyland Hotel, and our honoree from your beautiful city this year is Emil George, Emil is in the back, standing up. And I know he needs no introduction, but for those that don't know him, he's been involved with many, many things, but his heart is with Casa Youth Shelter, the Chamber of Commerce, he's been on the Parks and Rec Commission, the Hospital Board of Government, Board of Governors, and Los Al High School, boosters clubs, and he's an alum of, he actually was born here, and he went through school in Los Al, and graduated from Los Al High School before he went on to Berkeley and came back. Our Woman of the Year, so anyway, we're very, very happy to recognize Emil this year. Our Woman of the Year is Jill Bolton, she retired from 20-some years at Disneyland, and she's very active in many things at Anaheim, the YMCA, and the Segersstrom Center, which isn't in Anaheim. Our title sponsor again is Union Bank, and I'm just hoping, we are hoping, that you will all support our fabulous event one more time, and tables are 5,000 and 3,000, and if you were to buy the $3,000 table, that's only a little bit more than $11 per student who comes from Los Alamos. And in the past, we've given you two free-page ads, that's actually one ad, two pages, this was your ad, sorry, last year, and I'm going to leave this with Wendy, and hopefully you will do another ad this year. We have a large silent auction and a live auction, and we'd love to have you offer lunch with the mayor, or dinner, or a ride on a fire truck, or whatever, something, you could all take one of our, someone who would bid on it, you could, the city council could take them to lunch, whatever. We welcome your support, and look forward to seeing you on February 23rd, and in honor of Emil. And Johnny Stromeyer is here, and she is co-chair of our Los Alamos Committee, and we've enjoyed having her as chair for many, many years, so thank you. And all you Sunburst students, we welcome you at Cypress College, I know we have a connection already, but we'd love to see you on campus too, and congratulations on your graduation, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Gail.
Bye.
Yeah, yeah, Emil, we are so excited about this year for the Americana Awards, you know, one of the honors of being on the city councils, we get to work with Johnny, since she was a past Americana recipient, and we get to give our two cents worth, and there couldn't be a better guy, we're so proud of it, and everybody out in the community, you know, it's not only about supporting Emil, but Cypress College, it's a great cause, and you know, these kids that are able to get these scholarships, it's just, it's unbelievable. I don't know, my wife and I definitely get involved, my wife started there, came over from Iran, barely spoke English, and now is a master's-degreed teacher that teaches French in Garden Grove Unified because of Cypress College, so it's a great, great cause. So anyway, thank you so much. Anybody else wanna speak? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close this, going on to council announcements, who'd like to go first? Mark, you wanna talk about the football game?
Do you wanna talk about the football game? The mayor went to USC in his Trojans, as I'm sure everybody knows, lost to the UCLA Bruins.
Appreciated all the tax.
On Saturday.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control Meeting this month, and last month, both meetings were after our last city council meeting. West Now Activity Period looks to be over, there were 11 infections and one death in Tustin this year, which was actually kind of a low year, so that's, it's a good thing. But the 80s egypti, those are the ankle-biting mosquitoes that everyone is complaining about, those are in full effect, they're, the Vector Control District had 1,400 phone calls regarding those mosquitoes in October, last year in October, they only had 391 calls, so that's a 264% increase, so it's a, it's an increasing problem, and it's a problem we're going to be stuck with in Southern California for the foreseeable future, so.
So Mark, do you encourage, I've never been on Vector Control, but a lot of people, especially in my neighborhood, have been complaining about the mosquitoes, the action is to actually call Vector Control, because then that kind of gets them to know where they need to send out for spraying and stuff?
Right, so they can do spraying, a lot of what they do is education too, one of the biggest issues is standing water, and you know, taking care of that is really simple, you don't use any pesticides, any chemicals, anything like that, so they are more than happy to come out and do a service call, and just try to help you see what the issue is, or where the source of the mosquitoes is, because sometimes it's something that residents can take care of, or it's a neighbor's property, it's a, you know, abandoned swimming pool, or something like that. Usually there's a source that can be treated, and the situation can be improved, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, I also was able to attend with Councilman Kusamoto, the, at the Joint Forces Training Base, we got to see the Thunderbirds take off and land, it was incredible to see that, it was for the Huntington Beach Air Show. I attended a chamber mixer event at Griffin's Grill, participated in trunk-or-treat, which was a great event, thank you to staff for putting on that wonderful event, all the kids were dressed up and had a great time. We had a budget standing committee meeting last week with Councilmember Hasselbrink, and we're gonna address some of that in our, in our agenda today. Also attended the ribbon-cutting with Councilman Murphy for the tutoring place, a new business here in the city of Los Alamos, just about a block away on the Boulevard, so we wish them success, and are here to help them in any way we can. And then one minor issue, I'd like to ask the city manager and city staff to look at our municipal ordinances, related to campaign signs, to make sure those ordinances and rules are more consistent with state law, and to avoid confusion for future elections as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody wanna go next? Go ahead.
I wanna encourage you this year to give thanks, and have a happy Thanksgiving, but I wanna ask you to think about it. You know, I know you may have a used Porsche, and your friends may have a 6,000-square-foot house, and you only have five, but life in Los Alamos is not too bad. Look around the world at what's going on, look at people walking from Central America to our border, no matter what side of the issue you're on, those people are walking thousands of miles for a better life than we were born into in our case, so definitely something to give thanks for. Was able to go to the Chamber Breakfast, very informative this month, and also the beautification here of the Los Alamos Boulevard, we finally got done, just under Troy's deadline, he was almost out the door, and Ron, you guys, you know, you guys did a fantastic job, it was a tough location, you know, right off a street, and a big lot, it's, I just thought it was very well done, the mayor spoke eloquently about, you know, what this means to the city, and hopefully it will improve our city as we go forward. I was also very fortunate, I was re-elected to the OCTA at the mayor's select meeting, thank you for your efforts, Troy, in getting me a few votes, it's nice when you're able to hold out going to the White House as a trade-off, you know, guy had no choice. And finally, did go to the tutoring club, boy, they've done a fantastic job over there in remodeling that space, and wish them all the luck, thank you.
Great, thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. During the air show, I attended the promotion from Brigadier General During the airshow, I attended the promotion from Brigadier General Malanca, who's a commander of the 40th Infantry. He was promoted to Major General, which is a two-star. He's a great friend of the city and congratulations to him, it was a very nice ceremony. Attended trunk or treat with 3,000 of our youngest residents. It was an absolute blast, kind of a dress rehearsal for Halloween. And passed out lots of candy and a lot of very appreciative residents allowing their kids to come to a safe environment and beg for candy, basically. Los Alamos dedication, congrats to the mayor for seeing this decade-long project through. You're the only one that's lived to tell about it. And it was a very nice event and I'm glad that's over. We went over to the Americana Award kickoff dinner that we talked about earlier over at Park Avenue and just congratulations also to Emil. He's the ultimate Los Alamos resident. He truly does live, work, and go to school here, which is kind of nice. Regarding Orange County Fire Authority, I'm very happy to announce that Garden Grove has accepted our proposal to become part of Orange County Fire Authority. It's always nice to add another city. I think that brings us up to 27 cities now out of the 34 Orange County cities. What that does for us here is it adds seven more fire stations and 92 firefighters. And this is going to fill a void that we have with Stanton and Seal Beach and ourselves. So, it's, it's, it's good for Garden Grove and it's great for our region to be able to fill that void. We also talked about pension liability. There's going to be an item coming to us in the January meeting to amend our GPA and it's simply to memorialize something that we've been doing at OCFA, which is called the Snowball Effect. We've been paying off the unfunded liability in accelerated pace with the goal that we will be at 85% funded in 2020 and 100% funded in 2026. So, you'll hear more about that at the January meeting as far as the memorializing of that. We're also in good negotiations with Irvine for them to rescind their notice to withdrawal. It's, it's hopefully going to be a quick process, but we've come to almost every agreement on that, so that's also good. We certainly don't want to leave, want Irvine to leave. And then I also met with General Baldwin. We had an issue come up with Fire Authority. We have a U.S.R. team here and there's I think 26 of them throughout the country and they go out to various national tragedies and help search and recovery efforts. And Orange County is one of the elite ones and we get called often to go. The problem is, is we drive everywhere we go. So, the last one with the hurricane in North Carolina, we were called up and we loaded up all the big rigs and all the fire trucks and drove 60 hours straight through to go to a search and rescue effort. What we are working on with now, I know Chair Ed Sacks from OCFA is working with the White House. I've been meeting with General Baldwin and also the National Guard, Cal Guard, and Cal OES to be able to use our runaways and use some of the planes that are sitting there or over nearby bases to get these U.S.R. teams to the scenes much more quickly than driving cross-country. It's going to be a long process, but at least the conversation has started and nobody has told me no yet, so we're just going to continue to proceed with that and see where we can go with that, but that would be very, very good. I also want to invite everybody to Winter Wonderland. That's on December 1st over here at St. Isadora Community Plaza. It's a great event with snow and food and Mr. and Mrs. Claus and the tamale ladies and it's just, it's a fun community event. And I also want to invite everybody to the Sunburst graduation, December 8th. It is an amazing, off-the-hook, energy-filled ceremony over at Cottonwood Church. It's at 3 o'clock, I believe, this time? And you want to see some really proud kids and proud families. This is just a small sampling, but these kids volunteer at their age to come and get their life back on track and it's amazing to hear some of the stories and to see the faces and to see the families. So, it's free admission. It's a great event just to go, go see and support these kids as they get on to their next phases of life.
It is the 7th.
The 7th, I'm sorry. It's, it's Saturday that.
It's Friday.
Oh, it's Friday? Okay. Friday, Friday, December 7th. I am so sorry. But yeah, anybody that wants to come, it's truly a memory. That's one of my favorite events to go to and hopefully people can go. And with that, back to you.
Cool. Great. Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Just real quick, as Councilmember Churko said, I did get to go over to the Joint Forces Training Base to watch the Thunderbirds take off and land and that was really a thrill. And you know, thanks to their PIO, the Public Information Officer, Colonel Rick Laylor, who, you know, made sure that we knew about the invitation. So, I think next time they have this, I think, we hope we get it a little bit sooner and we can make it more of a formal ceremony with the Thunderbird or whoever the aerial combat unit is. And I guess city manager, during the Dodgers playoffs, the F-15s were here and I guess we received no notice on that, so maybe if we can check next time as well on those kind of events, because those are, that's really a nice weapon system as well.
If the Angels get in the World Series.
As long as we get planes here taking off, it'll be fine.
Until that happens.
Yeah. Don't, don't think they're going to be coming.
And with that, back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, a couple of things. For the, for all the youth in the community, you know, December 10th is really, really important last council meeting for me, but you know, it's going to be something really special. We have a resident in our community, her name is Nikki Moniger, and she's actually the bass player for the Silver Sun Pickup. So, if anybody listens to K-Rock, they're a pretty big band. They've been out there shooting for about 10 years, Grammy nominated. And you know, if you follow that band and you like their music, you know, you always, you never read anything about her being from Los Alamos. So, but one of my last things that I'm going to do is the mayor has recognized her as an honored citizen in Los Alamos and she's going to claim her hometown. So, it's going to be December 10th. I would ask if anybody's interested in getting an opportunity to see Nikki and to hear her story, we're working with LA TV to put together a video about kind of her time at Los Alamos High School and then as she started her music career and I think it's going to be really, really special. And I think, again, I think the youth of the community, they're really going to like it and even some of the older guys are going to really love it. The other thing is the hospital. I went to a 50-year anniversary for the hospital. I wanted to thank the CEO, Kent Clayton, for inviting me over there to give it a little bit of an address. You know, you think about this and I, I think I'm in a big reflection period as I'm getting ready to be off of this council, is that, you know, I go by the hospital and I see that parking structure and the new building there and I know in the 12 years that I had a little bit to do with that. And then I look at the downtown Boulevard and I see that and I think, hey, you know, this council's been able to do a lot. There's a hotel coming up out of the ground there at Serpentine and Los Alamos Boulevard, this council, the Ale House and the redevelopment, all that stuff. It's just really exciting to see, you know, at the local level, you know, we are bipartisan. We just focus on trying to get stuff done, you know, and I think it's just really neat when we're able to work, you know, whether we're working with the folks at Sunburst and the congressional folks that are on both sides of the aisle to get money at the base. You've heard everybody up here working together. Kind of in that vein, I just wanted to also say that I'm celebrating public service for my colleagues. My, my wife and I had everybody over at our house for dinner last month. And then for the Seal Beach Parade, I would encourage everybody to go out to the Seal Beach Parade because we're actually contributing to have a float for the cities, first time we've done that. And I'm going to be honored to be up there with the city council members and kind of my last thing. I definitely am going to come to the Sunburst Youth Academy. You know, it's funny is that when you go there, you know, probably the toughest guy in this council is Rich Murphy down at the end, but whenever he goes to the Sunburst Academy, he was mayor for two years and he had to get up there and speak and he just started crying. And, and so we, we always take a bet on whether he's going to lose it or not, because he just gets so emotional.
I do every time.
Yeah. That's how moving it is. It, you know, it is unbelievable with the stories that you guys have personally that, you know, you're sitting in front of us and you look like you're clean-cut, you're all good, but the stories of how you got to where you're at are unbelievable and we couldn't be more behind you. So, again, I can't wait for that. And lastly, just kind of two quick things. Like I said, the OCTA, Councilmember Murphy, I, you know, what an honor to have you again be on the Orange County Transportation Authority.
I'm curious, just thinking about it.
Yeah. Well, I want to see you cry later, but I, you know, the good thing about this is that, you know, all of the money that comes to this part of Orange County, you know, we only get three representatives in the second supervisory district, our city, our county supervisor, Rich and another person. And so, you know, he's out there, you see all that construction happening on the 405 freeway, the widening of the freeway, all, you know, the Boulevard, the synchronization. And, you know, it's good to have somebody on our council that's actually in there fighting for us. And there's appropriations of elective monies that are out there and so Rich has been out there and he was not only, you know, getting our vote, but he had nine other cities. He was unanimously elected. Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just first of all, the beautification, Los Alamos celebration that we had on November 5th, congratulations to the city council for opening up the Boulevard and recognizing the businesses that went through that process and we have an outstanding addition to our community. And thanks to Ron and Emlyn, all your staff for putting that together in a short time period. It was a great event. And I want Ron Noda, our Recreation Manager, just to give a brief update on Winter Wonderland coming up on December 1st.
Sure thing. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Winter Wonderland, presented by Friday Night Lights, the youth flag football will be, like Councilmember Hasselbrink say, on Saturday, December 1st from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. The event will be held on Pine Street with our snow area being held at St. Isador Historical Plaza. We have, we're ready to go. We're in our final stages. I got confirmation today, we're sold out on vendors. We have 44, 45 vendors. We have six food trucks. We have inflatables. We have a giant inflatable rock wall. We got a trackless train for the kids. We have arts and crafts. We have, again, the snow area. It's all free. So, come on down with your family. Again, it's Saturday, December 1st at, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. We also have tree lighting ceremony. We have performances. Thank you to the school district. We have a lot of choirs and orchestra, jazz bands coming out. We have community dance troops coming out. We have a lot of things going on that night to celebrate the holiday, so we welcome the entire community to come out that day. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And just want to wish city council and staff and the community a very happy Thanksgiving coming up.
Good deal. Thank you. Okay. With that, we're going to move on to warrants. Can I get a motion for the warrants?
So moved.
Okay. Second. Great. Roll call?
Mayor Edgar.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
Aye.
Councilmember Churko.
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy.
Aye.
All righty. Next up is the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar can be acted upon in one motion unless somebody wants to pull an item off the consent calendar.
I would pull B.
All righty. Anybody else? Can I get a motion to move the balance?
So moved.
All right. Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number 12A, I'm sorry, 12B, ticket handling policy, Mayor Protem Kusamoto.
So, I don't need the report, just a question for a city clerk. How many tickets do we get of this nature that we, I guess?
So, typically, so in my time here, we've only received two and we generally return them to the giver. And this is a proactive step in case any big event came through. The most recent one that comes to mind is when I believe it was Casa Youth went to Wicked, they had donated some tickets and we had to give them back because we didn't have a policy in place. So, it just allows the city to participate in community events if the donators want to give the tickets for free.
Oh, I see. So, I kind of, you know, read into this, something like Dodger or Angel tickets, I guess, those type of, I know the city of LA, the other LA, got in some big trouble with some of those kinds of things. And generally, I was not in favor of this policy at all. I think we ought to just go ahead and return that, but I wasn't, you know, I did not realize it would be those types of things, the charity dinners and what have you.
It's community events for a purpose.
And then, and then you had to fill out that form, the FPPC form, which one was it? 802?
802.
Yeah. And is that a big bother or how much effort does it take?
The form is relatively simple to fill out. We would just, per the policy, distribute the tickets and the form would be not time-consuming at all.
And that's what, upon receipt of the gift or on a yearly basis?
Upon receipt of the gift.
Okay. So, it's, okay, just sort of administrative type function. Okay. I was going to actually move to not approve, so I'll go ahead and move to approve this one.
All righty. I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to move on to item 13A, introduction of ordinance 2018-08, establishing regulations for sidewalk vending and compliance with state legislation. City turn, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. Les Johnson, the Development Services Director, give the staff report on this item.
Honorable members, council members, good evening. In September of last year, Senate Bill 946 was signed, which prohibits municipalities from banning sidewalk vendors. That same bill, though, does allow for municipalities to adopt their own program to regulate the vendors to the extent that's permitted by the bill. So, it's worth noting that that same bill also decriminalizes sidewalk vending, making the violations punishable only by an administrative citation. The proposed ordinance that's brought before you this evening is regulating sidewalk vendors to the maximum extent that's allowed by, by the bill. Some of the key highlights associated with the ordinance is that vendors are going to be required to annually obtain a permit from the city prior to operating, that they cannot operate within five feet of a crosswalk, hydrant, or driveway 40 feet from designated bus stops, nor can they be within the immediate vicinity of any farmer's markets or any temporary special events. Also, vending would be prohibited within 500 feet of any school site between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on days when school is in session. And there would be administrative fines ranging from 250 up to $1,000 for, for any violations. We also contacted Los Alamos School District with regards to the language and wanted to let you know that they are in full support of the prohibition within proximity to the , the school sites. And with that, that concludes my report and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
No.
I had one question real quick.
Sure. Go ahead.
Regarding the temporary special events, does that allow, would that, I may back up. So, if a street vendor wants to go into Cottonwood Park, are they allowed to with this ordinance? And sell their goods in Cottonwood Park, walk around the park and sell their goods?
If, if it's, if it's not a special event occurring, there are provisions for that. But if a special event were scheduled, like the trunk or treat event, for example, that just happened, they would either have to work with us on that matter to get permission to do so, or they would be prohibited from being able to be within that, that area, that bring the event.
Would a special event be like a private birthday party using one of the canopy, using one of the, I'm just trying to, what they can and can't do is they walk around parks and sell their stuff to kids.
A private event would not qualify for that. It would have to be a special event that, for example, went to Wonderland, a trunk or treat, an event that has been acknowledged by the city as a special event.
A city sanctioned special event. Okay. All right. That's it.
All righty. I'm going to go ahead and open up to a public, if anybody in the public wants to address the council on this issue. Okay.[1614.13] wants to address the council on this issue. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back, if there's no other comments, go ahead, Rich.
I just like to ask Brett, if, you know, we discussed this, but I want to make sure we do it, I received a notice of a maintenance power outage alert, and there was a power outage in our area for about eight hours, and I really don't feel that Edison gave proper notice, especially to an elderly person or whose English is not her first language, this could be quite a shock if you're on any type of devices that require electricity. I'd just like to have us talk to Edison, either have them come here or speak to you, and maybe me, whoever you want, and find out what the rules are of notice, and also, it just, I'm the least technological guy up here, but it seems to me that we should be able to get a generator out there and bypass whatever the problem was of transformer, whatever it needed to be repaired, it seems like electricity could have been run around that, and maybe at an additional cost might be what we're looking at, but this, this is a major inconvenience to the citizens and potentially very dangerous to the citizens, especially if they don't, you know, this, this looks like junk mail, looks like a rate increase type thing, it'd be very easy to throw away. And second, while, while I'm on my soapbox, if we could look at what voting rules are allowed and signs and things like that in the city, I mean, the proliferation of signs is going crazy, we're not Garden Grove yet, but other cities do restrict it, I know there's some First Amendment challenges, but I'd just like to know what, what is allowed in the way of signs, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any items for 13A? Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the ordinance for the first reading, I'll have the city attorney, if you want, to read it into the record.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, before the council for consideration is an ordinance number 2018-08 entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, adding Chapter 12.48 to Title 12 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code pertaining to the Regulation of Sidewalk Vending.
All righty, that's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no oppose. All righty, so that, everybody, that concludes our meeting this evening, we're going to adjourn, but actually, I think we need to go back into closed session, so what we'll do is, we're going to adjourn into closed session, if there's students here that need to get your paper signed before we go in, come on up, and thank you, everybody, we're going to go into closed session.